All right, I will call the Regional School Committee to order. First item on the agenda is to use time. So we will turn the meeting over to our headmaster, John Smith, and we'll see if we can use student representative.
We do. So I want to introduce Senior Holden Ferrari. Holden is one of our Student Council members and this year will be our representative for the Regional School Committee. In addition, Holden is a very, very talented student and a very talented athlete who currently is playing quarterback for our football team. So he's a little bit busy these days. Holden will give you an overview of some things that are happening through Student Council and some school, and then I will follow up with some high school related information.
Well, thank you.
So, we're sort of just getting off the ground now in terms of what we're doing in Student Council. We just got off a successful day for a heart chase event. So it was a fun time. We did a lot of events at last period, raise some awareness for that sort of cause, but now we're starting to focus our attention on charities and raising money for that sort of thing. So, we've got the blood drive, April antics, and teacher appreciation. Those are pretty much the three things we're talking about right now. So in terms of the blood drive, every year we get, you probably know, every year we get the foundation to come out and we get kids to sign up and it's pretty successful every year. April antics is a week pretty much where we, it's pretty much a de-stressed week where we try to have fun with the students as well as raise money for other certain charities. We haven't decided what we're going to do yet this year, but we come up with an idea with that soon. And then teacher appreciation is a big one every year. We had hosted an assembly towards the end of the year, but we start talking about that now so we can get everything going and rolling. And then, lastly, we have our town meetings coming up. As a senior, we don't do them, but the other grades do them and pretty much what it is is the grade, it's run by all the representatives for that grade and they ask questions to the kids and the kids respond and they write down the questions and feedback, pretty much a feedback and response sort of situation. So, that's pretty much what's going on.
Thank you, Holden. And before I turn it over to you, Mr. Smith, I just maybe perhaps want to introduce Kai at the same time as a middle school representative.
Kai is our eighth grader Student Council President of the Middle School.
Welcome to both. Two, a couple of things you need to know that you don't have to say at any point. So don't.
It's your free to say.
At any point in the meeting that you would like to. We know you have many things to do tonight and next in our meetings. And also, if you have input or questions on something that's on the agenda, don't be shy of us. So thank you for any questions.
All right. Okay. So in addition to a number of things that are going on as it relates to student activities, I pointed out in our report to the Regional School Committee, we had some student recognition with two National Merit semifinalists as well as 12 commended students. The National Merit is based upon their performance on their PSATs examination that they took as sophomores and based upon their scores, they basically choose the top 50,000 out of about 4.7 million students. And the commended students will not continue any further in the process, but they are recognized for outstanding performance. The National Merit semifinalists however do, and we have two this year. And both Danielle and Grace will be working with their guidance counselors on some additional application materials and they're actually eligible for some additional scholarships for college and university work, but we're very proud of all of these students and Ms. Shagnon and I had the opportunity to congratulate them with certificates this past week. And one other thing that I wanted to mention, this year we have, obviously Katie Greer is going to be coming on the 16th to talk about internet safety and basically your social media footprint, which will be important for our students, but in November, all grade 10 students will be attending an assembly seminar from a professor from Fletcher School of Diplomacy at Tufts. This was arranged by John Hickey, the Social Studies Department Chair, and he'll be talking about the current state of North Korea. He had actually made some connections with this professor last spring. It's obviously a very, very important topic in our world and in our own lives and he will be speaking to all the sophomores and it ties in with the summer reading that they had this past summer. So it's kind of a nice curriculum piece and it's timely and it's another example of experience outside the classroom to learn. And especially with the whole global competency certificate, students who are in that program will probably be doing some additional work with the professor and with Mr. Hickey as part of their requirements.
I didn't think of this before, but I know, I think it was at the PTO meeting you said we have one AFS student.
We do.
And did we ever have any international students from the program?
We did not. We did not. We reached out and we did not have any applicants. We do have a young lady from Sweden who is here and I had a chance to talk to her a couple of times now and she's doing quite well. She's very, very excited to be here and has an excellent host family. And once again, we're really pleased with the AFS program.
When you mentioned the cohort issue, that reminded me of that.
Question, how is the, are the Bridge Program and the Life Skills Programs being introduced to the students or communicated to the students?
Right. So, Life Skills, some of that's being introduced through the DRs, a little bit's being introduced through the ninth grade academic support because they actually are in the same piece. In terms of DS Bridge, it's been more information presented and it will be continued to be presented probably at town meetings, but some of our freshman meet and greets. I think in some cases too, Bridge is really kind of a specialized program, so a lot of it has to do with communication with particular families. So a lot of the outreach has been through guidance and it's been family to family in most cases. But I can tell you that we've got a number of students who are accessing it and what we're trying to create is an environment in which students see it as a really positive place for some students to receive the support because these are high achieving kids. So this is not a special education program. It's for students who are very high achieving, who just need some additional support. So, we're starting it with, we'll mention it at our town meetings and we've been doing it through some guidance seminars, they'll continue to do it, and then Ellen Shagnon, the Guidance Director, will be releasing more and more information with Bridge to our different family groups when she does her different guidance evenings. To this point, that was the way that Bright had suggested that we do it.
Great.
Life Skills has been a little bit different. We have a small population right now, but I can tell you that the students in that program, the student in that program is involved with school life, extracurriculars, and has been, which is great, and the teacher's been outstanding in terms of integrating not only the programs within Life Skills, but also reaching out. We actually had that program participated in our open house, so that student was helping out with some open house things along with Student Council.
Great. The reason I said, because I remember when the Bright folks were talking about it, that the success wasn't just communications that people might use it, but the general acceptance of the population so that it's not seen as, oh, you're going to that room.
Correct.
So I'm glad to hear that there's marketing to the rest of the population as well as those who might need it.
Yeah, and we'll need to continue to do that in different ways as we continue to grow. I can tell you that the two folks that we hired have been tremendous resources and outlets for that program. They did a little presentation to our staff today as a secondary and they're also meeting with every single department individually to help answer questions, talk about the levels of support. And both the therapists and the academic coordinator have also indicated that they would be happy to have small student groups, discussion groups. I know that Paul Byworth, our librarian, has also offered up his space as an opportunity to talk about it too. And I think part of it is to break some of the stigma around mental health and that's something that, you know, we're looking to try to do.
Great. Can I just speak back to that really quickly? Does that include incorporating it into the website at some point because I'm not sure that there's anything in the web.
Yes, yes. I'd have to talk to Ellen about that, but yeah, I'm sure.
Just in case people want further information.
Yeah, absolutely. The nice part is Eddie Perez Krebs and George have created additional referral forms, are continuing to work, as you know, we have a full year consultation as part of the grant with the Bright Program out of Brookline, so we've been using some of their materials, but they are also consulting. And we have a meeting with them, with Catherine Hool, next week, and then the following week we actually have a meeting with the Family Outreach, so there's a third member of that team. And she'll be talking to us about ways in which we communicate our program to the greater community.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Claire.
Mr. Smith?
So, this month's art display is from our eighth grade middle school students. As part of their color theory unit, students created these collages using a limited palette. Next, they will use their new knowledge and advanced color theory techniques to create an acrylic canvas painting. And then some upcoming events are, on Wednesday, October 4th, there is a coffee with Dr. Keough at 6:30 PM in the middle school library. On Thursday, October 12th, there is a sixth grade guidance parent night. On October 16th, Katie Greer is going to give an internet safety presentation. On Wednesday, October 25th, there is an early dismissal and there are also parent teacher conferences from 11:30 AM to 4:00 PM. On Friday, October 27th, there is a seventh and eighth grade dance and also a sixth grade social. On Thursday, November 2nd, there are parent teacher conferences. And there were, Student Council elections were held during the week of September 25th. Congratulations to all those who ran for office and gave a speech to their respective teams the following morning elected. On Team Ice, it was Natalie Breakley and Leo Omsedt. Team Fire was Liza Birmingham and Riley Schumacher. Team Thunder was Alexandra Martinovich and Alice Quinn. Team Lightning, Mackay Robinson and Abby Wing. Team Moon, Walker Adams, Angie Fang and Drew Thompson. And Team Sun was Evan Kenny and Garrett West.
The one thing I wanted to call attention to everyone in our report was, there was an article published in Principal Magazine, which hasn't been released yet, but kudos go out to Laura Mullin, Donna Foley, and Kathy Cimino, who were able to use art, an interdisciplinary project to connect art, English, and science. They did that last year. And the grant that helped fund their work last year was through Crayola, who approached them when they had presented at the national conference in the previous spring. It's just a credit to the hard work and efforts. Respect.
That's great.
That's fantastic.
That's all. And as close to information, that was the one that I wanted.
That's the one thing you want to draw our attention to this spring. Kudos to them for picking up the conference.
Thank you.
Or is it funded their trip? Nice. Next, did anyone have a question? Sorry.
No. I was gonna say, you guys, if you want.
Now's the time to sneak out of class.
Now, if you have homework, now's a good time.
Good job, guys.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, guys.
Yep.
We have a few other people who want to go with you. We'll turn it over to Ms. McCall.
Yes, perfect.
Thank you. So, just a few highlights from my report. As come up during the joint meeting earlier, we are in year two of Curriculum Review Process for Science. So I'll speak to the regional level, have it fill in the blanks about their students being constituents if you like. But the middle school science team has mapped out their curriculum, they did that last year, so now they're really looking at assessments and aligning their assessment practices to be more project based, to make sure they're in line with challenge success and giving students an opportunity to choose how they demonstrate their knowledge. So assessment is really their focus for this year. And the high school team, while they'll also be working on assessment, it's a little bit trickier because there's fewer teachers teaching the same content area, whether it's biology, physics, chemistry. They're really looking for content specific professional development opportunities and ways to either get out to institutions of higher ed or bring them here and perhaps host other neighboring science teachers to do some work on that front. In terms of English, we're launching, this is the Year of English. So last week on our early release day, we had the 6th through 12th teams come together. We cross pollinated the middle and high school teams and reviewed the principles of understanding by design and curriculum mapping can be somewhat tedious at times because you're already doing great work and you already have a number of resources where you've written down what you're doing and how you're going to do it, but it's a matter of coming together and putting it all in one place. So we actually started by talking about our vision for the Dover Sherwin graduate and what we want all the kids to have as skills when they graduate. And we made a parking lot so that once we got through the curriculum mapping process and made sure that there was consistency within a grade level for English content, that we would start having those higher level conversations if that'll be integrated and make sure that we're, you know, stressing that critical thinking skills, bringing in some of the social emotional learning from challenge success and those sorts of things. So, 6th through 12th is launched and they will continue to use early release time and department time to finish those maps, and then when they're ready, we'll get into assessment, just as science is now, and talk about foot assessment practices. And the elementary teams are working on launching as well in ELA. The K through 12th team will be coming together soon. I'm actually speaking with a leadership team tomorrow about what time of day is going to be best to get educators and administrators in ELA together, whether it's going to be half days, after school, those sorts of things. And we're going to look at more global view of ELA. And different than what we've done in the past, we're going to add in field visits. We are members of our K through 12th team can go out and visit other local elementary, middle, and high schools to ask some pertinent questions about topics or subjects they've been grappling with and find out what other communities are doing, and then bring that back to see what is worth adopting and what's worth changing, what's worth celebrating and keeping. So we'll go through that process, we'll look at our highlights, look at some evidence of what we're doing well, and then in the spring, we're actually hoping to bring in an impartial third party group of English educators from varying districts to Dover Sherwin to observe some classes, conduct some interviews, and give us some commendations or recommendations from an outside view of what we're doing well and what we could do better. So, the curriculum review process is going to be a little bit more dynammic than it was last year and we're starting to line that up. And MAP is in the bullpen, ready to go for next year, so once we get this down to a system and a schedule and a format that we can handle, they'll be ready to go for next year. And in terms of FLESS, just preparing you, you're two years out from inheriting the first cohort of FLESS students. So we are continuing the conversations, actually October 11th, Callie Egan from the middle school and Jeff Ferris from the high school will be joining me at the meeting with the elementary folks to talk about where the core graders are in terms of their proficiency levels and how we are going to measure them and prepare them for sixth grade and how the sixth grade program might be to change as a result.
Can you just elaborate on the phrase in your report about moving towards a proficiency based model? I wasn't quite sure if I understood what you meant.
Sure. So, back in the day when we learned languages, you got your Spanish textbook, you did chapter one, chapter two, chapter three, chapter four, and now they're usually in the National Actual Standards for Reading, Writing, Listening, and Speaking, where it's more based on proficiency in each of those four skills and speaking to those levels versus just a chapter sequence. So, what the sixth grade is anticipating is that the cohort, when they reach the middle school, will be probably farther along in their speaking and listening skills and they'll need a little bit more help with their reading and writing to catch up, but they'll be able to kind of soar with those speaking and listening skills they've been practicing for the last six years at the elementary level.
Can I just ask, are there some way that you're thinking about assessing who will continue on and who may change language so that, because that obviously impacts.
Right. So, we haven't gotten that far into the conversation. Callie Egan, being the curriculum leader at the middle school at this point, still thinks that there'll be opportunity for kids to change out and begin with Latin one or French one if they'd like to. Again, those subjects might need to change as well, seeing that those neurons have been activated and the kids are going to be a little bit more comfortable being uncomfortable with a foreign language, so they might have to adjust their instructional strategies too, but we're still thinking that we give kids the option, you know, to change in middle school and then again, you know, in high school.
So I'm just following up on the wording, you're thinking, provide kids with the options? Are you going to encourage kids to, I'm sort of thinking about the process that we're remembering now.
Yeah, we're still planning it out, so I don't want to put anything out there.
I'm sorry.
But the current thinking is, yes, students will still have the option to either continue on Spanish or move into French or Latin.
Right. And last spring, we heard from the administration that it was once the student body got to fourth grade that you were even able to begin to make some of those assumptions about where they would be in sixth grade. So that's why that conversation is so new, I suppose, to you folks.
Right. So, Callie will be doing a lot of classroom observations, will probably do some sort of assessment in the spring of where the fourth graders are at that point, and then same thing next year, do some observations and some sort of assessment in the spring to get ready for the fall of sixth grade.
So we'll be hearing more.
She's clearly aware.
Yeah, we'll be hearing more about that transition.
Absolutely.
Now that they're at the fourth grade level, do they start to get tested at all on the proficiency or is it just integrated in with their other subjects?
It's integrated in. So, the teachers have been actually talking to the core content teachers about what units they're studying and trying to tie it all together. So, it's not, you know, a separate vocabulary unit and a separate grammar unit. So, for example, the second graders were studying the seasons, so, you know, what came home was a map of the season, you know, the animal habitat, they've been studying that. So, they've been trying to tie it all together from an interdisciplinary approach. There haven't been any formal tests, again, testing at the elementary level varies anyways.
Yeah.
I do think that the teachers are keeping track of the proficiency levels in speaking and listening and they do have an opportunity to interact one-on-one with the kids, not as formally as they do here in the labs.
Yeah.
They're still having that interaction in the classroom.
And going back to the ELA assessment, are, to what extent are the social study teachers and/or the science teachers also engaged in the proficiency strengths, weaknesses of the writing of our students since they're prime recipients for a lot of the materials and, you know, assignments that they're providing?
So, when it's their turn to go through the review process, I know, for example, the science teachers also took with them, there is a strand of ELA standards that are specific to science and social studies, so they're looking at it from that lens. Now that their English teachers are in it, they're going to be surveys, as were last year, and that go out to parents and educators and administrators to collect data. That survey will go out to, you know, history and science teachers and they can get feedback from them about.
Okay. So they are systematically engaged?
Yeah.
And then, the summative assessment through MCAS, does that inform this at all?
We'll be looking at data, yes. Yes, of course.
And I know what you say here, we'll have some new elective courses, and I, when you come back with that in a couple of months because we'll be doing a program of studies, I'm sure we'll be interested to know perhaps what we're giving up, if we have to give up electives.
Sure. You referring to computer science?
Yes.
It just says engineering.
She says engineer and it doesn't say what it is.
Yes, right. So we had our first academic standards meeting, which is the first clearinghouse, and it presented, Nick Routh, the 6th and 12th Department Chair, presented an APHS course, which received unanimous approval. And then there was also another course that was some programming around game development and that one, as a group, we sent back to the team to look at some prerequisites and to make sure that it was going to align because on the surface, that sounds pretty interesting and pretty cool, but it's quite complex. So, Nick just wanted to get some feeling from the academic standards group where people sat with that. In some of these cases, these would be semester based courses, so it would be not so much that we would be hauling courses away, it would be student choice.
Okay.
But yeah, as time moves forward, we'll certainly present that in the formal package with the new program sets.
Can I raise an issue around that? So, at what point, John, do you guys typically do the program of studies? When in the year is that usually presented?
So, we have a deadline of October, I think it's 20th, to have it submitted internally, to have any proposals, things of that sort, so that we can bring it to, typically is either the November or the December.
Whenever you're ready, yeah.
Yeah. First reading takes place in December, I think, and so any alterations that need to happen. So, we need to have one more academic standards meeting because we do have a couple more things on the table, and other than that, I think we'll be ready to go.
I'm just raising the question so that we're making sure that we are mindful of any kind of budget implications.
Correct, and that's why.
Right.
Because I thought it came later and it just didn't seem to sync up.
It's usually, December would be the latest.
Okay.
Because you'd go live early January.
Yeah.
Did you want to continue?
No, just lastly, I'll mention that the MCAS date has been moved to October 16th. So originally it was the week of the 20th and now it's up to October 16th. And there was an email out today saying that many of the DSE folks were going to be offline for a mandatory important meeting, so I have a feeling that DSE is getting ready to release the information. So we'll have data and things to share in the upper meeting for sure.
Wonderful, thank you. Any other questions? Dr. Keough?
Thank you. Thank you all for your reports. We've had, we're really, I'm in the thrill of the full swing at this point of the role of superintendent. I've had opportunity to attend a lot of meetings, some with the kids, Arts Council meeting that was fabulous, that Janice Barry organized. This is a new thing where they're bringing kids from the various art programs together and it was really fantastic to be there with the kids and to hear about their thinking and how they might make performing arts or the visual arts more attractive to students and talking about after school opportunities is really a very cool and vibrant group of kids. Went to the Citizen Action Group that Cathy Malloy and Donna Benigan organized this year. Is that the eighth grade, Scott?
Yes.
Yeah, nice, nice event where they really concentrate on citizenship with the kids, a very nice kind of teaching opportunity. And it was great to talk to the kids about their ideas, about what they might do differently to serve kind of the greater good, so that was fantastic. As Kai mentioned, we do have a parent coffee tomorrow night here in the middle school library, so all are welcome, 6:30. Again, this is all about those entry meetings and asking questions. I'm very interested in hearing from parents as to what they feel are our greatest strengths that should never be changed and what they think we could potentially do better. Had some opportunities for lunches as also as part of the entry process, met with the middle school staff last week, three lunches, I believe, came through. Terrific group of educators, really thoughtful questions and ideas, all of which I was able to record. And then with the Pine Hill staff this morning, so that was also excellent. We will be starting quarterly meetings, so I'll be meeting with John and Scott on a regular basis where we will actually visit the classrooms, but we'll actually target something that we've identified as a leadership team, as an area to focus on. For example, kind of the level of thinking of the activities involved. Are we asking our students to evaluate, to synthesize, to apply, and to work at the highest level of, say, Bloom's taxonomy? So we will decide on what we're going to look for and we'll take those visits and then we'll sit down and have conversations about it. So I'm excited about that, those are coming. You know, hopefully from my report, that we do have the Appendix C Subcommittee coming together. This is again to address the MOU that came out of the contract negotiation with the DSEA and you can see the reps on that and we're trying to organize a meeting for the next week or so. I've given my entry strategy update already really with the Joint Committee, so I'm not going to delve too deeply into that. not going to delve too deeply into that. We did have a great meeting last week on, is it the 27th type of long date? Because I think you had the 27th, Beth, and I had the 28th, I'm not sure which it was now that I think about it, it was the 28th. On the 28th, a group of administrators were able to go in and meet with parents from Boston with Monique. It was a great, great event, really a nice opportunity to hear what, what kinds of challenges they face with their children coming in from town, and it was really, a really positive and healthy exchange. I also wanted to report that the Metco program received a donation of $5,000 from the Needham Bank, so that was certainly a nice event and a nice ceremony held in Needham, where we heard from one of my former colleagues, Deb Ward, it was excellent, really nice event. And that's about it.
Questions? We know you're busy.
Yeah, there's a little bit going on.
Thank you for a brief overview. Next, we'll go to Finance and Operations, Ms. Torrey.
Thank you, everyone. I'm happy to be here this evening. I have presented to you a couple of financial statements, so first one is your general fund revenues as of September 30th, and I believe as I already pointed out in September, the only variance we're recording right now is chapter 70, and that is, we, you know, obviously budgeted off a draft charity sheet, and the final charity sheet came out this summer, we were up an additional $27,500. I will say I expect that number probably to decline slightly as we progress through the year as the statistics data comes in, because I, I have a sense that we've got one or two more schools that are going to fall under us that aren't currently in our numbers. Don't be surprised if you see that drop a little bit. And at this point, we're just going to assume that we're going to be collecting all the other revenues until we know otherwise, on the activities and the parking fees and revenue and such, so we will, as things come in that make us change that, hypothetically, we will move it as we pronounce, just so we can truly see the difference.
And effectively, our, our kickback to the towns for our excess E and B just flows right back through under their assessments.
Exactly, right. And that is, exactly, so we won't, we'll just reduce the assessment they still owe us for whatever pieces that is.
The additional, they'll be sent in.
Yeah. Any other questions on revenues? For the fund chart, so the status of appropriations, I took it as of October 27th, just so that I had good record. And we also took the time to table the contract information and all the non-personnel contract changes, and spread your reserves through the appropriate, there's lots of, there's about there.
I'll put here, are there extras?
Yeah. Are those things you don't have, the copies? There's email that, I think they have packaged, they've packaged, they're excited.
This isn't your monthly report?
Yeah. So if you looked at your previous budget book, you would notice under School Committee, there's been a much larger number sitting in your expenditures, but now we've taken and put appropriately in the function code, line up where the salaries sit. So it's still early to be making any broad statements about the variances, as I note in my report, we still have a couple of positions that have been hired that we haven't set up on cable yet, so their positions aren't encumbered. We are still, have not retroactively paid our administers, they're being paid this week, so those are not reflected in the statements. And in addition, as you know, we have shared employees, the shared employees that don't sit at the region but sit at Dover, actually, there's two at Dover, their expense has not been picked up yet, because we have not done the inner district billing. So there still are salaries that aren't encumbered on here, that I hope by October 30th, when you see your November report, that they will be reflected. So you're not seeing 100% of the salaries, but you are seeing probably 98% of the salary activity is in. The contract costs, when you take everyone who was budgeted, and again, I spread this based on the personnel that we budgeted on, so I didn't take into effect, into account any staffing changes after the budget, that's how we spread the contract reserve. So we utilized the whole, it's actually 555,000, I'm sorry about that. Used all of that, and we needed about 15,000 more, that will be absorbed by staffing changes that we know have taken place. And once I agree with your October 30th statement too, I'll give you a more detailed in and out of staffing changes, and then by then the variances will be cleaned up and you can actually see the flow through. But I can say, knowing what has happened, that we are going to see from the get, from the first, from as of right now, there's no other staffing changes, we'll see the positives variance on salaries. On expenditures, there's still, there's very little encumbered in here right now. I think as I noted, we've encumbered our debt payments and our transportation costs. Over the next month, we will start encumbering some of the other known expenses, that's why you're seeing so many huge numbers of the operating budget remaining column, but we will, as we obtain more information and feel more comfortable, we will encumber things like utilities, healthcare, et cetera, and that number will start streaming as the, as been too bad. And I hope to have more of that also prepared for you in advance of your October budget workshop, so you have a little bit more feeling of where we stand right now.
Are you still targeting the 13th?
So it's October 13th at 7:30, middle school conference room. Any questions on the status of appropriations? And also on salaries too, none of our segments are encumbered yet, so that was another big number, that one, so it's getting covered in coaches that you'll see come out right now that are unencumbered. The other update we wanted to provide was on capital projects, activities package or reports, that has a little bit of a history to it, and because we still had some 17 projects in progress when we left you in June, but now all of that has been completed except for the feasibility, the storage feasibility study, which if you look at where we stand with fiscal year 17 at this point, assuming that we spend the 15,000 for the feasibility study, we overspent on capital, mainly because the fire alarm panels, which we had multiple wiring issues as we progressed through that, so that did eat through some of the extra money that we had in capital for reserves. I'm going to suggest that we allow that money to stay attached to the fire alarm panels, and as we move forward with doing a feasibility study, we either use operating or building fund to pull that together, there's actually probably a more appropriate use of that, because we could really would capitalize the feasibility study. So I think all in all, I don't feel that that's inappropriate what we did, know that we will find sources of funding elsewhere to cover the feasibility study once we can get that going.
Okay.
On your 18 projects, Ralph and his staff have done a great job, you'll see there's a lot of projects that have been as complete. The only one that we haven't really dived deep into yet is the EMS software upgrade, and that was a little more involved, and I want to make sure we do that really well, so we're waiting to just clean out some of this other projects that are in progress before we dive too deep into that. But importance of this one too is going to sort of set that, the building ground for bringing Chicory and Pine Hill also onto this system, so we want to make sure we do really good research before we jump in, because it's supposed to be a, it's going to be a, a three district management system that the director of facility will be able to take care of on this boat if he wants to.
This is for HBC.
The management, the energy management system. So what we'll do for that, that would first be just the size of the project, is we'll do a, a sort of a request for services, so we will hire someone to come in and sort of scope out the workforce and then help us through the bidding process.
As part of that, I, I hope we'll evaluate the vendors and how long their solutions tend to be.
Last, so that we don't.
Yeah, to be last, yeah, because this just seems like a lot of money for, I mean, theoretically, we already have an EMS in place.
Right.
And software shouldn't rest.
Well, no, and it's not even that too, and, and involved in this project too is replacing a lot of the control, the controllers, so it's not just the operating system, it's also all of that.
Terminal.
All of their age. And so we had a Subcommittee meeting of the Capital Group on Monday, right?
It's been a long wait today, Tuesday.
And, and briefly, Lori, so we walked through the draft of your onsite inside report, made comments, and then our next step is for Ralph and I to sit back with a consultant, go over some of the questions that we had, and then our hope is still that we have a report to present to this committee at your November meeting, that I think is basically where, really no surprises, everything's falling in place as we really thought, and I think the report is a little more streamlined for you. And so we're looking forward to then taking that, and at that same meeting, we also did an initial talking about what fiscal year 19 capital looks like. It's changed slightly from what we had projected for 18, we will hope to bring that to you in November 2nd in draft form.
Great. I noticed that I really appreciate the taking the operational out, it makes it much cleaner, it's so much easier to read.
Exactly. It's a lot less numbers, and you get a better feel of what your true, full year capital per year is going to be. And then just on other financial items, our auditors are onsite right now, telling us about fiscal year 17 audits, I'm hoping that we will be able to close up in December as scheduled, again, if you remember last year, we were held up because of North County Retirement audit, so I will get an update, see if we can do the same issue this year or if, if not. Our fiscal year 17 E and D certification package is currently being reviewed, we've been answering some questions back and forth, it will slow down a little bit, because we moved our offices last week, but we hope to hear soon about that, we'll let them know. And we're in the process of completing the region's end-of-year report, that report that we signed into the Department Ed. We did request a 30-day extension, which is pretty typical out there, so we were granted that, so our deadline now is October 31st, so I'm going to call it later and sign that.
Any additional questions? Thank you, John, I know it's been a lot of work, and, did you want to mention?
Oh, yes, so the good news is that, one of the positions that has not shown up by payroll is that we did hire the full-time regional business office associate, really kind of like yesterday, and she's scheduled to come with us on October 30th, and she's coming from Brookline Public Schools. She really was a financial person in their special education department, but had previously worked at Lab and ECO, so has more of the general operations too, so we're really excited, because I will say it's hard. I probably had 50, over 50 applicants, and she by far, there weren't very many people who had school-based or the municipality-based experience, and it sort of helps to have that, and so she, she was here and everyone else was here, so we were thrilled that she was willing to make the move and join our team.
Awesome, great, fabulous.
I just want to, again, thank Dawn for the extra effort that she's been carrying for quite a while, really, all of last year and into this year, it's been with the completion of the contracts, there's been a lot of double duty, so much appreciated.
The next agenda item is October enrollment, I'll turn it to you, Dr. Kean.
Sure, thank you. So you have our October 1st actuals, so this is the, sort of the, the date that the state uses to, to establish where school systems are with their enrollments. It's not to say that we don't have changes, we had a change this week, in fact, student move out, so it's always in flux, but as of October 1st, you can see the totals for, for the region are 1194, you can see some pretty good-sized classes coming through in eight and nine at 182. If you look at the second page, and these are, again, changing numbers, but if you look at the second page, you'll see, you can see where we stack up in previous years, so, for example, 1194, we really haven't been at that level as far back as '08, so our numbers are, are certainly holding steady. Not unprecedented, I know back in the, certainly in the 80s, there were some 180s and even 200 at one time, I think that may have been the max, so I believe we can, can accommodate these kinds of numbers. John would, and Scott would know better than I, but are you feeling okay on space with the current numbers?
Yeah.
That's good. And then on the third page, you can see the actual breakdown of where our students are coming from, so six through 12 from Dover, 651, and six through 12 from Sherburne at 520, it breaks out at 55.59% from Dover, and 41, 44.41% from Sherburne, and that shakes out as essentially the same as last year.
Exactly, so, you know, I, I didn't believe it, so I sort of just crunched the numbers, but if you take the incoming class versus the outgoing class and the changes, Dover's up 12, Sherburne's up 12, exactly the same number. Same percentage, not the same number, but the same percentage.
Yeah.
And what really sort of, I think, spawned it is that if you look at the bottom of the schedule here, you have, you have migration in and migration out for Dover and Sherburne, and Dover was zero, because they had the same number of kids leave who came in, and so what sort of helped Sherburne, even though we had that, so what I had mentioned earlier in another meeting, is that the 12th grade class that graduated was 50%, 50%, 77%, 77%. So you would assume that when that left, that that was going to have some fluctuation in the assessment, although it didn't, because of the Sherburnes from, with their move in to move out, they picked up 13 kids, and Dover was zero, so that's wanting to equal out the incoming sixth grader population. You couldn't have.
You couldn't have said that, yeah.
That's why we put draft on there, because we're just not, we're still.
And that's been shared with both finance committees, who are anxiously awaiting.
So that's, that's it in a nutshell, as we get into the budget season, we will do a little more work with the projections, but that's really where we are as of today.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is the approval of the Athletic Handbook, and the Athletic Handbook had its first reading at the September meeting. As of this afternoon, I heard that there was an update to the concussion portion of the handbook, so this evening I would invite a motion and discussion on approving the version we saw in September excluding the concussion portion, and that the concussion portion will be the first read as a informational piece to our budget workshop, and we'll be able to vote it in November, if that works for everyone. I don't know if you want to speak to anything on here, John?
Yeah, so in the Athletic Handbook, the most recent version in draft form, we did in fact place something on page 22, which says DSHS complies with MIA Citation 105 CMR 4, which ties in with MIA, but also Mass General Law, and with, with regard to head injuries and concussions in our extracurricular athletic activities. concussions in our extracurricular athletic activities. It basically, that's our statement acknowledging that we are in fact in full compliance and are following strict guideline as outlined by the MIA, which is our athletic governing body. Additional information that Jeff did provide to the regional school committee are a series of handouts that the MIAA provided at the District C meeting, so the state is divided into a number of districts, we're in District C, and they basically added those additional pieces, some of which actually are very relative to concussions, but then also opiate use or misuse as a result of sports injuries, which lead to surgeries, concussions, et cetera. So Bill Ginn, the executive director of the MIAA, and then SSAA, which is the principal arm of that organization, he has requested that all MIAA schools include those additional handouts in all athletic handbooks. A lot of it is some bulleted information, some of it is contact information if you suspect or have concerns or want to learn more about the impact of opiates, pain relievers as a result of students having, you know, major injuries which require surgery. So that's the major piece, and I spoke to Jeff just prior to the meeting, he's perfectly fine with that, he just wanted to make sure because he was just given that information two days ago.
Right.
To be placed into those packets, and the only other thing he just wanted to state was the compliance piece.
So that additional information will be in the document that's shared on the 13th.
So can I just really quickly ask, does that mean those, if we are useful underneath the chemical health policies, so would there be changes or additions to that too, or is it's?
No, there would not be, it's more informational only, so there wouldn't be any changes to the chemical health rules and regulations, it's a lot of information provided by medical professionals who work in conjunction with the MIAA.
Thank you. Any other discussion? So I will invite a motion to approve the athletic handbook for the 2017-2018 academic year with the exclusion of the concussion and new additional information from the MIAA.
So.
Second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, motion carries. Thank you, thank you, John.
Thanks for clarifying that.
Thank you to Jeff for working on that.
Thank you.
Consent agenda is the next item, it includes the approval of minutes of September 5th, the West Suburban Health Group appointment, Dr. Keough, and in Dr. Keough's absence, Ms. Vettori, and the acceptance of a Metco donation. Any holds?
Good to me.
All right, I will invite a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Should I run the table and do this one too?
All right. I'll turn my. Second? Further discussion? Those in favor, motion carries. Thank you, got that, Amy?
Just cut and paste, it's good. Okay, who's, yeah, whose day is it?
Communication, it should be Ann's day today. Communications for members' information, special education report, fall athletics participation report, Sherburne School Committee minutes from June 13th, Dover School Committee meeting minutes from June 19.
I just wanted to say, and I thought in Christine Smith's report, I liked the chart, I know that it's challenging to present that kind of information to us, and I thought it was a well-constructed communication device that respected student privacy but gave us some information, so.
Right, she, she felt very strongly about trying to find that balance, she knows that the committees and towns will rely on that information, especially as we talk about our budgets.
The only thing I didn't quite understand is when, if it's unapproved, what does that, like?
She did a chart on the back.
Yeah, but then what does it mean for us? Does that then correlate to anything, like some things we, or is it just kind of a case by case?
I'm missing one.
Okay.
It's not specified.
Exactly.
Oh, okay.
That's what I assumed, but I didn't make the assumption.
So in other words, it may have been a placement in a system that we may not have been on board with.
Got it.
And so therefore, it was not necessarily set at that rate, and we might have entered into it.
The discussion, right, okay, that makes sense.
What is SLD?
Specific learning disability.
And so my comment to that is, it's interesting, I mean, we've got 50 students, and that relates to the LBD program, correct?
Yes, that's reading difficulties, not difficulty.
Right, so I think we'll want to hear something during the year as to how that's going, and that's a crucial part of service delivery to students, inclusion for students, budgetary expenses if things don't go right.
Absolutely, we, in fact, we had a conversation about that this week in the central office about, and my question is, so how do we know our programs are effective? Especially programs servicing so many kids, and so Chris Smith is aware that that's something that's really important to all of you and to me, and I do believe we'll be able to give you further information about that as the year progresses.
That's great.
And the schedule included, it's counts of both students that are in district or out-of-district placements, one of the, the one that's by a particular diagnosis code, for lack of a better term?
No, the diet, no, that's, the seat says Chicory, Pine Hill, Middle School, High School.
Those are all in district.
In district.
That's not an indication of their age range, that this is in district.
Yep. And for those who follow the circuit breaker reimbursement, there was a significant decrease in, doesn't directly affect the region.
We got really comfortable with 70% and it came out at 65%. So that was a little bit of a makeup flaw because we got really comfortable with performing 70 out there, I started thinking that we were going to get, so in pass server, at this point, I was budgeting 60% of their circuit breaker in their general fund budget to cover some really little wiggle room or something for a unit or something, that's what's going to have a great impact.
Do you happen to know, just out of curiosity, so if I add, if I'm doing this right, if I add the middle school and the high school, and I know Christine's not here, so I don't want to, you guys don't have to, I'm just curious, the 83 and the 98, if you add them together, so we have 181 students in the special education program between the two schools, and we have 1194 students, so it's approximately 15%. Is that, do you have a, is that?
The average is about 20%.
Right, it's a little, it's a little low.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's downed. I think that's, I think that's low, I'd heard 17, so, but if it's at 20% now, I'll take your word for it. It fluctuates, but that's definitely low by the state standard.
And that's, I would say that's the lowest I've heard at a school committee meeting in a long time, I don't know if Scott knows.
Which, excuse me?
That seems, that is a little worse than.
Oh, maybe it means we're doing good things at the elementary schools, that.
It does, it actually speaks to the impact of interventions, you know, response to intervention, the RTI work, the intention of the RTI work was to address student issues before they fall way behind and then need to be on an IEP, and I think, I think we're seeing it barefoot.
Yeah, I don't mean to put, given that we didn't make Christine stay, I don't want to make this a full special ed discussion, I was more curious about the numbers.
Great, thank you very much. Meeting item, agenda items for the November School Committee meeting, I have possible program of studies, onsite incident report, capital report, perhaps something on the FY19 capital budget, that's all I've heard from tonight.
The past results?
Well, we'll have a talk about, see where, see where you are, and when the information comes to you, how much time do you need to do the analysis, and then sometimes we've done it in December, depending on how much time you need.
Pretty busy agenda.
So items that never got touched on last year, like the feedback from our college surveys for the past several years and some type of longitudinal look would be nice, now that we should have at least three years of surveying underway.
Does everyone else, what does everyone else think about that as a?
I'd say if we're collecting data, it'd be interesting to see what the data says.
Yeah, I thought it was interesting when, that year we heard it a few years ago, it was nice to hear what the kids thought.
It might not be, there might not be longitudinal conclusions, so it might not be actionable, but even that would be interesting.
Just information.
Yeah.
If that's possible.
It is, and if I may, Ellen Shagden and I have been discussing, there's a program through Naviance that we will be bringing forward to the superintendent for his review and potential approval, which would enable us to collect additional data, and we've been asking some questions around FERPA, we've been asking some questions around, you know, what exactly will they collect for us? There are a number of colleges and high schools that are now using this program, and it does enable us to extend that time period, actually well beyond four years of college.
Oh, wow.
So we can actually be, you know, tapping into early career feedback from alumni.
That's fantastic.
We're setting up a meeting with you, we just, this week. I think that sounds fantastic.
That sounds great, but what we are doing would be interesting too.
Did you have anything else, Michael? Okay. Great, we will adjourn at 7:30.
Do we need to, is there any question?
Yes, we will adjourn and then go into executive session, not to return to open session, collective bargaining, employee benefits.
Where's the poll? To go into executive.
We can do that in our meeting.
Go ahead.
Perfect.
How are you polling?
Oh, we'll poll and then we can note it. Poll, Michael?
Hi.
Aye, 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 aye. Thank you.
Thank you.